Good evening, excuse me, I'd like to call to order the Village of Gurnee Planning and Zoning Board for this Wednesday, November 2nd, 2022. Could we roll call please?
Campbell.
Present.
Morgan.
Present.
Northrup. Pat.
Here.
Hey, Pat.
Here.
Where?
Here.
Present, we do have a quorum. Excuse me, if everyone would please join, stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me, before we get to the regular part of the agenda, it's my understanding that some of you may be here to voice concerns about the Trans-Chicago project that we discussed at our last meeting. And we've already had our public comment and have voted and sent our recommendation to the Village Board on that. We will not be opening the floor to the public for that matter. It's my understanding that the Village Board is scheduled to address it November 28th?
Yeah, on November 28th. So basically, there was a hearing at the last Plan Commission meeting, and that was properly noticed. And that was an opportunity for both the applicant and anyone else wanting to attend to be part of that public record. Once that work is done, this board's work is finished at that point, and now it will go to the Village Board, which it's my understanding is currently scheduled for the November 28th meeting. At that time, public comment will be opened up, and because these folks no longer have any role to play, they either made their recommendation or not recommendations, they took all their votes. They're just a recommending body, they don't have the final authority. The Village Board has the final authority, and so it's my understanding that that will take place on November 28th, and everyone, if you're here exclusively, we have another matter that's an agenda item that the Village will be taking testimony on and making that decision. But once this board acts, then the matter is elevated to the Village Board, and that is the proper venue to make any further comments. And I see there's a couple of questions, so I'd be glad to answer.
This is a critical question, you mentioned November 28th, that's what they're voting on, but there's a public meeting also that everybody's talking about, is there a chance?
Uh, yes, there is a, there is another. Yes, you could, you absolutely can at that, that's a good point. We do have a, there is a Village Board meeting in between, and you could certainly raise points at that time. Because that's now in front of the body that will be making that decision, so certainly that's available to anyone.
Just one more question, you've been all the things to the parents about, all the things to the parents about, that we felt that you wanted your, that you were the purpose of all the calling and voting. So you allow them to hear or do things that they're told to do, so is this a way, um, just to get to the end about that?
Well, again, you can speak to that, but since it's no longer at this board level, the people that you have to talk to would be the Village Board members, not these folks. Because their work is done, and so now you have to go to the Village Board.
I want to share a little bit of that.
Right, and, 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 you know, I can understand maybe, you know, folks didn't know that, but it is not an agenda item, nor is it slated to become an agenda item at this level now. So definitely, if you have those concerns, you could attend either the very next Village Board meeting. It's my understanding it's not going to be an agenda item, but there is certainly public comment at that time, and you could submit. And, you know, for that matter, I can tell you that if you have any submissions to be made, that you want to provide to the Village Trustees and to the mayor, it is a general practice to accept that and include that in the packet for the trustees to consider. So submissions are something that can be received, and they can be presented to the people that will be deciding that issue.
And just to amplify something that Mr. Winter mentioned before, the Planning and Zoning Board, we made a recommendation to the Village Board, we did not approve anything. So the final approval rests with the Village Board.
The one thing with the solid issue is, I wrote it down in the bridge, and I don't know who, but we need to tell the soul. I don't think the people in the area that live in there, and they knew that you guys were going to approve this and that.
Okay.
And I think if there was a little more information, evidence, you should have let the people, just three subjects that were on one, there are no. Take on that after the meeting, and I think the last meeting, I don't know if it's, when we're doing the stuff that's really in the pack, you know, housing, if you're living, you have trucks, you know, and more than that, when you're in the apartment, basically, there's, I don't know, I think I see.
Okay, well, we're getting real.
I can just respond quickly to that. So there is a state statute that whenever there's a special use. And so the state statute was complied with?
Right, I don't think that really worked because the three subjects.
Well, it's also my understanding that the state statute.
There's a picture of a sign that's knocked down in the field, I have to tell you.
Okay.
Well, this is not the 21.
Yeah, well.
That's why I hope they stop.
Well, the sign.
Purposely knocked it down.
So the sign isn't the, is only one of the requirements. There was written notification to properties that were adjacent to that. Again, I can't debate with you what the state statute should say, I know what it, I know what it says, and I understand, you know, your point, but I can just tell you that at this point, it is now at the Village Board, and you can make that same comment to the Village Board. No, I'm not, I'm the Village, I'm the Village Attorney.
Yeah, I never saw any sign that told people.
That was not facing the doctor's office. And who sees that?
Okay, so again, that's not something that's before this group, they do have, I'm sure you're going to be respectful to the fact that there is one agenda item tonight. And so the board's going to focus on that tonight, you're certainly welcome to listen to that public hearing. But just for clarification, did not want you to wait thinking that an additional opportunity would be given. You should just come back to the Village Board. Right, my understanding is, and you can always check with, with that agenda, but I'm quite certain, and Mimi staff can confirm that for me, it is the decision, it is set as an action item on the 28th. You can come to the prior meeting and make comment at the public comment portion of that meeting. You're welcome to do that, okay? So, thanks for coming out, and we'll be, I'll turn it back over to the chairman.
Great, great, and just for point of clarification, the public comment portion of the Village Board's agenda is typically toward the end of the meeting. It's typically toward the end of the meeting, there's an opportunity for general public comment at every Village Board meeting.
Can I, can I just say one thing before anybody leaves? The matter is tentatively set for the 28th of November. The agendas aren't set until the Wednesday before that Monday meeting. We have, we being staff, are trying to get the reports and the ordinances ready for that meeting. But again, it's best for you to call, you know, sometime that week before, just to make sure that it's actually on that agenda on the 28th. I'm pretty certain it will be, but never say never, so something might happen, and I just want you to be prepared. So it's always best just to call or to check the website, just to make sure what the agenda says. Again, it will be posted, generally, it's posted Wednesday or Thursday right before that Monday meeting.
And just as a reminder, that meeting actually starts at 7:00 PM, not 7:30. And as the chair has indicated, public comment is toward the end, but it just depends on the number of items as to when that item, or once that agenda item will be reached, so.
One quick question before I go, the EPA, I guess, is telling us that it's going to cause a bunch of pollution, you're being a lawyer for Gurnee, and we have pollution concerns of the north, and we're going to stop it. What does a lawyer for Gurnee say about that?
Well, so, yeah, I'm not going to fully engage in that, but, I mean, typically speaking, if you have any information on that topic, you can submit that. I would say, from a general proposition, because of the Village's experience, you know, with prior air monitoring, I would, you know, I don't know exactly what you're referring to, because testing of EPA and air quality is very complicated.
Well, with all the diesel trucks and so forth, supposedly, it's going to be a different fluid, you're saying, our windows are going to be covered with, you know, oil.
Yeah, but, so, I would read that carefully, because certainly, you know, there are aspects to, I can tell you that the Village cannot regulate truck traffic on public and county highways. That's ICC, that's Interstate Commerce, and so I don't know specifically what you're talking about, and so at this point, I would just say, if there's any information that you would like to present to the Village, please do that. In general, air quality and measuring air quality is quite involved.
And if I can, if I can offer one other resource, when matters like this come before us and come over the Village Board, there's, there's often a lot of speculation, and sometimes just frankly, not incorrect information out there. I would encourage you, if you haven't done so already, to either go to the Village website or go through YouTube and view the recording of the meeting that was held by this body. What was that exact date?
I'm sorry?
What was the date of our meeting, I forget?
The 14th of.
The 14th of, October 14th.
October 14th.
So if you go to YouTube and search October 14th, Village of Gurnee Planning and Zoning Board Meeting, you can watch the whole meeting.
I think it was the 12th, wasn't it?
It was the second.
Was it the 12th?
It was the 12th, it was the 12th.
Okay, sorry about that.
With the applicant, yes, absolutely.
So the meeting was with that, you made recommendations.
It was an official Planning and Zoning Board meeting, it was a public hearing, everybody was sworn in, it was sworn testimony, and we made our recommendation based on the facts that were placed before us.
Okay, so, so you made up the facts we're giving to, so you had the new prospective buyer plan, property, but you made a whole sense of, of the air traffic, the traffic, the noise, the, all that stuff.
All that stuff was discussed.
With the noise? With, with who, with the prospective client?
It was a public meeting, just like we're having right now, or public hearing, I should say. And all the facts, a presentation was made by the petitioner. We had the opportunity to ask questions, there were members of the public that were in attendance, and they had the opportunity to ask questions. We addressed all their questions the best that we could, and at the end of the evening, made our recommendation.
Do you know if you could have adjusted any last night, or if they were to do the process of street, there was a lot of people.
Well, again, just rest assured, there was no limitation placed on anyone. If they, now, I understand what you've said, that you were unaware of the meeting. However, I just want to let you know, those that were in attendance, there was no limitations placed on, on anyone that happened to be there. And like I say, it sounds like you're going to attend a Village Board meeting where the matter is currently in front of, and address those issues further. There's nothing further that this board can do at this time.
Well, how many people do we have to have here, so that more is a name?
No, so, so it's a deliberative process? It is at the board level, because now we're done with this. So each board member would make their decision, and they make their decision on facts that are presented, and certainly, you've indicated tonight that you want to provide some facts on that, and that's what they'll make their decisions on. Certainly, when it comes to opinions, everyone has different opinions. In the end, in terms of the legal standing of matters, the record, the Village will want to make a decision based on factual findings that are based on the evidence that has been presented.
Right, but what are the marketing facts, it's just going to be a lovely question.
Well, you know, that's, again, that's something that you can bring up at the meeting, and I'm sure that past practices, you know, there's been opportunities, you know, to discuss those very issues.
Right, and I lived here when we were in Gurnee Hills, and I've had two matches of world in Gurnee Hills, so you want to see, I called, I think it was.
Right, you mentioned that at the last Village Board meeting, because we were both there.
Maybe if we could put a, well, we have the Gurnee Hills, I think this probably is really, because it's all blacked out.
Okay.
So you're going to force me to repair versus woo, because I won't be able to sleep.
Okay, sir, I'm going to have to ask you to please discontinue, because we're not.
Because we do have an agenda, so, thank you for your comments, I see there's one last question.
One very brief question, thank you for your forbearance in listening to us.
Yes.
I have two questions. How long did you have the material from Trans-Chicago? And by show of hands, could I see any of you who looked at their actual sites, which are available on their website?
Okay, so those, you can cer, because these are not the final decision makers of that, you can certainly present that if there is a hearing on that.
I want to know what facts they used. I heard earlier that you got the materials, you debated it at one meeting, and you voted to change the zoning. So I asked two questions. When did this board get the material? And have any of you by show of hands actually looked onsite at the Trans-Chicago website to see what their repair yards and truck sales actually look like?
So I think we can answer, because it's universal, the board gets the packet, generally, on, this, this panel gets the packet that they would consider, generally, on the Friday preceding the meeting day. That's when they would have.
Six days.
Well, it's, it's that.
Generally.
It's, they get the packet on Friday, I just want to be factual, you can, and then the meeting was on Wednesday. In terms, in terms of, and again, that, that information is considered, and that is for certain, that, that, that information is distributed to the board members.
How many of the board members looked, you got materials from Trans-Chicago. I'm trying to determine factually, how many of the board members actually in that five-day timeframe took an opportunity to go onsite and look at what their sites, their repair sites and their truck sales actually look like?
Okay, so you can, you can, you can reserve that question and ask that of the board members, okay?
You guys voted.
You're here.
You made the recommendation.
Yeah, I.
You're here.
I know, but this, this is not, typically, because this is not a public hearing, this isn't an opportunity to ask any question that you might think is relevant. And I'm not saying that it isn't relevant, I'm just saying, that's not the purpose that we're being here.
So the board is determining to hide behind procedure?
No, the board isn't determining the higher, to hide behind procedure.
Yes, it is, sir.
Well, that may be your opinion, but the information that they consider, you can rest assured that it was within the packet. If, for instance, you want to make sure that they see something that's posted on a website, you can submit that to the Village, and then you can know that that's part of the packet. The one thing that I want to avoid is you getting the misinterpretation that because you've made some broad reference to websites, to Chicago Transit, what does that really mean to the commissioners? So again, I have to tell you at this point, I know we disagree on this point. You think that you should be able to poll this board member, these board members tonight about that specific information. What I'm submitting to you is that you can do that to the Village Board, because it's at their level, if you want to do that, you can do that.
Thank you.
I'm not prohibiting you from doing that.
Okay, once again, the meeting was held on October 12th, and you can, you can find it on YouTube to hear the testimony.
Yes, 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 just call and make an appointment with staff, it was in the letter that went out. It's also a copy of it, it's at the Public Library.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I appreciate your forbearance and the, along with your questions. You said that there was a Gurnee property that was notified, well, I'm in a Gurnee property, I don't know, nothing about, you know, the occasion of the, the.
Well, again, it's, so, I mean, basically.
State law says that we have to go out 250 feet, we go out 500 feet. We can certainly check the list of property owners, if you've recently purchased, if it's in a trust, if it's, you know, if you're beyond 500 feet, you won't get a notice, so maybe you thought you got.
We also did have some return back to us, so that's a possibility, like a return to sender, they weren't able to deliver. So if you want to get in contact with me, my name's Clara Gable. If you want to come into Village Hall, or I can give you my direct line, I, we can figure out what happened.
So if you're 500 feet from the property line, it may not, that property line, you have to understand that there's a right of way there. So if you happen to be, you know, interior, a greater distance, you may think in your mind that you're within 500 feet. They do make that calculation very precisely, and again, just to let you know, this village actually extends that distance, doubles it, because the state statute only requires up to 200 feet. I do represent some other villages that don't do that, Gurnee does go out 500 feet. I'm not aware, are you talking about the applicant?
Whether the applicant, whether the applicant had meetings with some homeowners association, that's not, I, that's not what the Village, doesn't make those arrangements, so I don't know what they, what homeowners.
But the letters would have went to any spinney-run residents within 500 feet.
All right, well, once again, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you for your patience, everyone. Next item on the agenda is the approval of our meeting schedule for calendar year 2023. One thing I did note is, April 5th Passover begins at sundown on April 5th. Traditionally, we have not scheduled Planning and Zoning Board meetings on Jewish holidays. I'd like to make a suggestion, since that, the month of March has five Wednesdays in it, that that we schedule a makeup for April 5th on March 29th, that way we don't have two meetings in a row in the month of April. Oftentimes, we've just had, it would have been on April 12th instead of the 5th, and then we have back-to-back weeks, but if we use, take advantage of the extra week in March, we can spread them out a little bit.
Do we know what week spring break is for schools?
It's usually.
Sometimes it can get a little difficult, that fourth week in, fourth, fifth week, whatever, and that end of March can get difficult, so.
Yeah, something we have done in the past is we've just scheduled one meeting in a certain month, and we've called a meeting if we needed it. So that's another option as well.
You can also, you can always cancel it if you don't need it.
Yeah, that's fine, we can do that.
Okay, so I propose that we schedule one on March 29th. Does anybody else have any questions or suggestions about the calendar? Oh.
When's the break, the spring break?
We can go ahead and schedule it that week, and then if, if, you know, we have an issue, then we can cancel it, like you said, or.
Yeah, I mean, chances are, if it's an issue for someone that's making a petition, they won't.
Correct, correct.
Use that meeting, so.
So it'd be, so the board, if that's what you like to do, you just have to present the motion to approve this schedule as amended, and a second to that.
Thank you, Brian. So any other discussion on the meeting schedule? If not a motion to approve as amended, as suggested amendment? Was that you, Dane, or Todd? Todd, second by?
Second.
Second by Josh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a, is a public hearing for a rezoning of the properties, two properties that are located at 963 and 975 Bell Plain Avenue.
Yep. So Bogomel and Bitha Gankars are requesting a zoning map amendment to rezone approximately .5 acres located at 963 and 975 Bell Plain Avenue from R3 Single Family Residential District to R4 Two-Family Residential District. The petitioner has indicated the request is being made to allow the construction of a two-family dwelling on each of the lots. Two-family dwellings or duplexes cannot be built on the lots as currently zoned R3. The subject lots are surrounded by R3 Single Family Zone Properties to the north, south, and west, and P Public Land Zone Property to the east. The nearest R4 Zone Properties are in the block to the south of the subject properties. The applicant is in attendance to present their request, and on this matter, the Planning and Zoning Board will make a recommendation that will be forwarded to the Village Board for their determination.
Thank you. As this particular item is a public hearing, I would request anybody from the petitioner or members of the general public who intend to ask questions, make testimony, or make comment, to please stand and be sworn in by the Village Attorney.
So if you could stand and raise your right hand, even if you think you're not sure whether you're going to participate during the hearing, probably easiest to stand at this time and raise your right hand, and I'll swear everyone at the same time. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay, you then, you can now be seated, now turn it back to the chair.
Thank you. For those of you who have not been to one of our meetings before, the procedures are fairly straightforward. I'll initially turn the floor, the floor over to the petitioner. They will make a presentation to the Planning and Zoning Board. We will have a round of questions that we will address to the petitioner. After we've had our first round of questions and comments, I'll open the floor to the public, at which time, any member of the public who would like to ask a question or make a comment would be required to approach the microphone at all times, whether it's petitioner or members of the public. When you first get to the microphone, please clearly state your name and address for the record. Once we've heard all the questions from the, from the members of the general public, I will close the floor to the public, and then we will answer the questions, and then we will then go into our final round of deliberation before making a recommendation to the Village Board, okay? So at this time, we'll turn the floor over to the petitioners. So if you could use the microphone in the center of the room.
Good evening, my name is Eric Jarok, I'm a representative of the owner. So as.
Could you state your address, please?
I'm a representative of the owner.
Do you have a business address that you could provide?
Business address, yeah, 125 East Lake Street, Bloomingdale, Illinois. So, as mentioned before, there are two adjacent lots that we are proposing. We are asking for a zoning change to R4 from R3. The overall goal is to allow for more density housing, like was mentioned, two units, two duplex units on each lot. Just going through the. Just going through the, to the application, as we mentioned, there's a adjacent R4 zoning already in place. We have reviewed the comprehensive plan of the visual gurney. It suggests that there's going to be a higher density in that area, and that's the overall plan of the village. It's not shown on the map, but we are very close to the commercial. There's Grand Avenue right there. So basically, it will allow for more dense areas to utilize the already existing businesses along the, along the Grand Avenue. As I mentioned, the proposed zoning change is consistent with the proposed medium-density housing land use. These are just vacant lots along, along that Bell Plain Avenue, so that's what, that will promote the development of this area. And essentially, just providing more, more additional housing units within, within that commercial corridor right there. I would say that, that would be, that would be it.
Thank you. One other request, just to make sure that we get spelling and everything correct, there's a sign and sheet on the table behind you.
Sure.
Okay. So is there any other presentation?
No.
And just one note on the spelling really quickly. In the notes, I believe the name Bogomel was misspelled, so for the motion, just to make sure that we use the correct name for that, and I apologize for that.
Okay, thanks Clara. One observation that I have, when I think in terms of conventional land player, land planning theories, multifamily housing is typically seen as a transitional zone between a commercial, a non-residential district, typically a commercial, and single-family homes. In my mind, I'm a little troubled that this really doesn't fit that particular model, and that's, that's my comment for right now, for what it's worth. Edwin?
I agree. If it applies to these lots, that they can be rezoned to R4, I don't see any other lot in that entire subdivision that couldn't be, or couldn't request the zoning to R4 also. There's nothing unique about these two pieces of property, other than they back up to a park, but that doesn't give the indication that it should be set up as R4. So that's, that's my, my take on it.
Josh?
Is there any proposal of exactly what's going to be built there, or, I don't know if this is a question for us, to say, can they build a threeplex or a fourplex on, or is it just zoned for a duplex?
Maximum is duplex.
Maximum, okay. Then, do we have any proposal from the petitioner of what it will look like, or what the site plans, what you have in mind to build there?
This is a rezoning, you can't, yeah, you can't look at.
So if it was something that they needed, a plan, you need a development. There are certain requests, but this is, because the zoning would, if it's recommended and approved, it flips, and so it, provided they comply with the bulk standards, they may never, you know, they would just simply submit for a building permit.
Okay. That makes sense.
Good question, but just for clarification.
Sometimes we see a lot of that.
Right, you do see a lot of that. This does not happen to be one of those instances.
Because the danger is that they present a concept that looks really, really cool, and they change their mind and have something else that for subsequent ownership has a different vision, and it may or may not be consistent. Chad?
Just looking at the property, it doesn't conform with, you know, duplexes, just the whole neighborhood is just totally different. You have the single-family homes, and you put a duplex, two duplexes there. I don't think it fits within the community itself, so.
Liliana?
One of the considerations for an amendment is the question of how will this benefit the needs of the community? Can you talk a little bit about how this will benefit having a, you know, currently zoned a single-family versus two-family residence?
Right. So like, like I mentioned before, your comprehensive plan predicts that it's going to be three-plus units, this area, in 2040, right? So essentially, what we are asking for is that it's going to happen, that's your goal as a village. And, and that being said, you are, you have in mind that you will have to provide more housing units, and, and you have already, you know, in that plan, it's already written down that this is what it's going to, that area will be. And, and it makes a lot of sense, because yes, it's, well, yes, our, our, the two lots are maybe a little bit apart from the existing R4 district that's already there, but, but you have to look at it as we are just a block away from Grand Avenue. This is progress. You know there's going to be more commercial along Grand Avenue, and the way to promote these businesses, you need to bring more people in there, and, and that's the natural state that this will be buffer between the R3s, you know, further up, but if you look at overall, you know, zoning map, this is already happening. You will have R4 in between that R3 at some point, and, and even in that comprehensive plan, you understand that, and it's, it's right there, that this is going to be a three-plus area with dwelling units. So it's going to be multifamily. We are proposing duplexes, but down the road, we know for a fact, it's going to be full of townhouses. I mean, that's, that's how it happens along the major roads, because you have so much, you invest in your public transportation, and, and you do the commercial stuff, just because there's greater density that can actually use those, those amenities that are right there. It's, you know, where you see the red, that's where Grand Avenue is.
I, I went by, and you say it's real close to the commercial area, but it is, from what I saw, it's not that close, and I, I agree with the other members of the board that the, the style, it wouldn't, it wouldn't conform to the style, the current style of the residence system.
I agree totally, but like I said, you look at your comprehensive plan, and, and you're going that road anyways.
You know, as a point of order, I think the staff and I could provide some background to the comprehensive plan. These standards are applicable to a 200-house subdivision that's on 80 acres, 40 acres, and so in some instances, if more properties being developed, you might find, you know, if there was an actual shortage in housing, and you can make the argument that adding 400 more housing units, that might be persuasive. That should also be considered in terms of the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan isn't providing a plan for each individual lot within a block. It is the general area. What's been cited is that some of those properties already in that general area are duplexes, and they acknowledge that. But just to say that, and I'm not saying that, I understand what the petitioner's advocating, but just to understand, the comprehensive plan wasn't designed to give necessarily a basis for two particular lots in this area, it's a more broader area. I think we're all agreed on that, and I, I think the petitioner is acknowledging that there are some R4 in this area, but I think the map clearly indicates that it is, it is farther south.
And I would also just add that the comprehensive land use plan provides a range between three and eight dwelling units for this area. The proposed R4 would be right at that eight, so it'd be right at the upper limit. Currently, as zoned for R3, it's a little over four, so it's still in that range. The comprehensive land use plan is not saying that this is going to be multifamily, it gives a range, and you have to take a look at the standards for rezoning. Comprehensive land use plan is just one, it's also the surrounding land uses and the surrounding zoning, so I'll just put that out there for consideration.
And also, it is presently zoned R3, which does not allow.
That's, yeah, that's the consideration of the existing surrounding zoning and land uses.
And of course, that takes into consideration the very size of the lot being proposed, because that metric is based on dwelling units per acre. So, you know, obviously, larger lots sometimes could accommodate more, bigger footprint, and it, and the density would decrease, even though it is a higher usage dwelling, but if there's, if it's spread over a greater expanse of property, you know, that affects that ratio.
But just to mention, we will still, you know, within the areas we have, we, we fit within R4. We can build.
For the minimum, for the minimum.
For the minimum areas and everything. So, so the lot complies, you know, we can do wherever is.
But we're all agreed that the density is eight per acre, correct, with the dimensions of these two lots?
I, I wouldn't know.
These two lots are about a half an acre, so, so two lots together are about a half an acre, so you have four units on a half an acre, that would be eight units to the acre.
All right, so it's still.
Dane?
I agree. I mean, I drove, I drove the sites, I agree that, I don't see the necessity, the necessity that rezone, I drove the site, and as you're coming off of Grand Avenue, there is that transition where there is R4, and then there is a break, and then you see the R3s, and they're all single families on both sides. I even drove all the way down to see if there was additional transition going, you know, or fill-in going down, and it was not. Certainly, going west and into that neighborhood, it, it does the same thing again, where there's a transition from R4 into the R3s. So I, I think it's consistent, I don't, I don't see anything.
Thank you. All right. Excuse me, at this time, I'll open the floor to the public. As I mentioned before, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and if you can also, please use the sign and sheet on the table, address your questions to us, and once everyone has had an opportunity to ask a question, I'll close the floor of the public.
My name is Michael Petru. I reside at 939 Bell Plain, so I'm just to the right of the P there on Bell Plain on the map. And I appreciate the opportunity to make this statement. I became very familiar with the Compass 2040 comprehensive plan, and I pulled this quote from there. "The east grand gateway is a commercial area that has not seen the same level of investment as other areas in the village over the past few decades. The corridor's older building stock produces low retail rents and declining property values." I certainly agree that that's an issue, and now I recognize that is referring specifically to the retail corridor, but I would argue that the best way to induce business is to build a community of long-term owners and people who are personally invested in the neighborhood. And this is already made difficult in this particular block with the busy Bell Plain Avenue running down the middle. Yet, two-family homes in Gurnee are a majority renter occupied, rather than owner occupied, and the average tendency of a renter in a multifamily unit in the U.S. is only two and a half years. The report also notes that Gurnee's population has stabilized in the last 20 years, and has slightly declined, actually, since the 2020 census, and Gurnee housing stock has a relatively low vacancy rate, but also a relatively low share of cost-burdened residents. There does not seem to be a population that is eager to fill this space that has sat empty for so many years, so this rezoning, to me, seems like a solution in search of a problem. Building two additional units by themselves won't achieve any of the goals laid out in the plan, but will exacerbate existing issues within the community, like overcrowded bus routes, and I do have a statement from the District 56 website here where they talk about difficulties, staffing shortages, especially with, with bus routes, traffic on Bell Plain, and parking shortages that are due to the inability of anybody to street park there. Now, I want to be clear that I'm not against multifamily housing, having lived in it myself for nearly half of my life, and I agree that housing diversity can be beneficial, even in a village that has historically seen low-density, single-family construction as core to its identity. But I would urge that these developments be more thoughtfully planned, to integrate them into the community, with the necessary infrastructure in place to support them, and with an eye towards providing a benefit to those residents who have been there for years or decades. An example of this I could point to would be, if you've seen the beautiful developments in Vernon Hills around Milwaukee and Town Line Road. Would prefer that, rather than them being shoehorned into an open lot just because it's available, and that serves only to change the character of the neighborhood and cut neighbors off from one another. And I'd want to say specifically, although it was touched on by some of the board members, that when I mentioned the character of the neighborhood, there have been four new construction homes in the 900 block of Bell Plain in the last 20 years, all of which were single-family homes, including ours. And there are no, as you've mentioned, R4 zones on that entire length of Bell Plain north of Grand View, or in any of the surrounding blocks north of Grand View, so it, it really feels out of place, and I'd like to oppose. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Becky Kutsinas, and I live at 907 Bell Plain Avenue. I would like to address the first of the eight on the village plan, the compatibility with the existing use and zoning of nearby property. I would just like to say I agree with what the board members have said. I put together a spreadsheet of nine residences on the 900 block of Bell Plain. These are all homes with families, and they are all single-family, and that would be the surrounding, the 963, 975, so in addition to, thank you for those of you who drove down it, but I would just like to submit that into the record, that all, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine residences are single-family. So I put together a spreadsheet for you. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your support.
Thank you. If you could please sign the sheet there, I'm, thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Good evening, thank you for your time. My name is Marjorie Stuckwish. I'm a resident in Gurnee, off of Bell Plain, for the last 12 years, my husband and I, and our two children. I'd like to address the number three point, the rezoning petition. Does this rezoning benefit the public safety, welfare, and best interest of the community? So as far as public safety goes, that Bell Plain Street is part of the main bus route to Spalding Elementary School. Spalding is straight down Bell Plain, so there is a lot of bus traffic going through there, and there is already a problem with speeding and traffic violations and heavy traffic going down that street, making unsafe conditions for the bus stops and bus routes, one of which is right in front of our house, and creating more high-density housing in the area does not seem to meet the community's best interest or public safety. As far as welfare goes, there is already, as Mike mentioned, a school bus shortage for the District, the D56, the district, and the weekly communication from the school district, the most recent one, again, restated the problems with the school bus shortage. the most recent one, again, restated the problems with the school bus shortage, and that they're potentially gonna have to consolidate and even eliminate routes at this point. So again, high-density housing does not seem to be in the benefit of the community. I question the lot owner's investment in the community. I mean, them not being here tonight, I think, speaks to that. As well as, we, my husband and I have observed the lot owners dumping large amounts of waste and yard waste, logs and cut-down trees on the properties in question, on the properties and behind the fence line into the public areas, that park area, as well as the third vacant lot next to it. And I have pictures of it that I could show you. It's visible from the street, as well as like, from other properties. So, that's what I'd like to say about that. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, and if you could please sign in. Anyone else? If not, I'm going to close the floor to the public. I don't think I really heard any specific questions that, that we need to, to answer with regard to the observation of some possible code enforcement issues. I would encourage you to contact staff about that.
Otherwise, now that the floor is closed, it's open to discussion. As is always the case, when an applicant makes an application, it is appropriate for the board to make a motion in the affirmative, saying, okay, you've made this application, and so we'll make the motion in the affirmative to approve it. However, if you don't agree with the request, you would then vote no. But we can't, we can't advance a negative statement. We can advance what the applicant has requested, and if it gets a negative vote, then that negative vote gets reported to the board. So just to understand the process. So, we always start with a motion following up the request, asking, framing the, the motion in the affirmative. So if you're at that point, you can have a discussion.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions or comments from members of the Planning and Zoning Board?
I noticed in the, in the packet we got, that staff felt that we might be setting a precedent if we changed this from R3 to R4 by just spot zoning. Changing the zoning, is, would the staff like to elaborate on that anymore, or?
Well, I think, basically, I think the questions have been appropriate. What you're trying to do is, for any rezoning, you have to balance the existing uses and see whether, you know, the, the request is respectful to the already vested rights of the adjoining property owners. So that's very significant. Obviously, the smaller the parcel becomes, you know, it becomes a more condensed analysis. And so, I previously mentioned that when you're looking at patterns of development, that usually is looking at a larger area than just two lots. That does occur, probably most likely, when it is truly a transitional lot. Now, the, the applicant has indicated that in their view, this is a transitional lot, but each board member would have to make their own assessment as to whether they concur with that or not. You obviously have the advantage of looking at the map to see what is in the vicinity. In terms of, and so that's the decision that you have to make tonight.
I could add my comment on that one. I don't see anything unique or compelling about these two parcels that would give me a compelling reason to be in favor of, of this sort of request. In my definition of transitional, transitional occurs when you're directly adjacent to something. And this is kind of hapskatch. There's nothing directly adjacent to it in terms of other R4 properties. There are other R4 properties in the area, I'll grant you that, but, but the nearest ones are like a city block away. And in, in my mind, that's a pretty substantial difference for me. So, okay. Anyone else? Nope, if not, as Brian indicated, a, a motion in the affirmative would be in order. And then, we would vote our conscience in terms of how our recommendation should go to the village board. Motion maker. Motion to forward a favorable recommendation on the petition of Bog, I'm sorry, Bogmick and Piera Genzar for a zoning map amendment to rezone property located at 963 and 975 Bell Plain Avenue from R3, single-family residential district, to R4, two-family residential district. Second? Second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Campbell?
Nay.
Morgan?
No.
Bruce Phillips, or, sorry, Pat?
Nay.
Nay, Pat?
Nay.
Nay.
Nay, motion fails. As was previously indicated, the Planning and Zoning Board is a recommending body to the village board. Staff will let you know when this matter will go before the village board for, for their consideration, in the event you desire to try to pursue this. Our next meeting is scheduled for November 16th. It's my understanding we do have at least one public hearing, so we are planning on having a meeting. I will now open the floor to the public for comments for anything other than what was on this evening's agenda. There being none, I'll close the floor to the public. A motion to adjourn?
She's...
I, I just wonder, will we also be notified if any of the...
You need to watch the website.
Not for this one. There's no public hearing notice requirement, so if you want to stay in contact with me, I can let you know when it is scheduled.
Sorry about it. Thank you for...
There's a, every, every Friday, the village sends out a, a weekly update thing, and on that, it indicates when the upcoming meetings are gonna be, and there's a hyperlink on it all the time that will take you right to the agenda for our meetings, as well as the village board meetings, as, as they come up in the future. And thank you for your, your professional approach. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
By Mr. Pasak? Seconded by Mr. Campbell. I'll give you a say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. See you in two weeks.